Hello, everybody. Welcome to the February 12th, 2024, meeting of the Lenox School Committee. And we have a lot of visitors here, so it's very exciting. A lot of times, we're just on our own, doing the work of the schools in sort of our routine fashion. So, welcome. Calling our meeting to order, our first order of business is, again, to announce, as you can see from the screen, that we are being broadcast on CTSB TV. And you can come to that website online and find recordings of our meeting if you want to go back and get some exciting news and watch it over and over again. You can certainly do that. It's many times you could send it to your grandparents and all that good stuff. So, all right. Our next order of business is hearing of visitors. If you are a visitor coming to speak, if you could please come to the microphone and identify yourself. And we do limit comment to three minutes for each speaker. Please.
There is one more after those that were signed up.
Okay. So I will just let people speak. And I will also ask, if your information is duplicative, if you want to just say, hey, I'm here in support of that person, we'll just try to keep it concise if we can.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the Lenox School Committee administrators and others who are here this evening. My name is Gabriella Sheehan, and I'm here tonight to request that the school committee pass a Secure Storage Notification Resolution to help keep children and teens safe from gun violence and raise awareness in our community about this topic. The resolution has the support of the Superintendent Collins and Police Chief O'Brien. Secure storage resolutions have already passed at 14 Massachusetts school districts, including Mount Greylock, Pittsfield, and North Adams. I am a resident of Lenox, and my three kids attend Morris. I'm joined by my two colleagues, who will also give public testimony tonight. We are volunteers with Be Smart for Kids, an educational program of Everytown for Gun Safety. Everytown is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that works to prevent gun violence in communities across the country. We all know that there is a gun violence epidemic in the United States, but we want to share some information tonight to give a clear picture of how this affects our youth and offer something we can do to help keep them safer. As of August 2023, and based on a 2021 study, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, firearms are now the leading cause of death of children and adolescents in the U.S., surpassing motor vehicle crashes and cancer. Nearly 2,100 children under the age of 18 are killed with guns every year. That's an average of six children a day. If we include statistics for 18- and 19-year-olds, that number doubles. This includes homicides, suicides, and unintentional shootings. In addition to deaths, 6,000 children under the age of 18 suffer gun injuries every year. Teens are particularly at risk for suicide, and the rate among young people is at a record high. 10- to 24-year-olds have the fastest-growing firearm-suicide rates of any age group, and firearm suicide makes up nearly half of suicides among young people. When it comes to school shootings, 76% of perpetrators under the age of 18 obtained guns from their home or the homes of relatives and friends where they were unsecured. We have all been horrified too many times by school shootings, and Massachusetts and Lenox Public Schools are not immune. You read the letter that I sent several weeks ago, that as a teacher in Berkshire County, I've had three incidents of loaded guns in my school, once in an elementary school, once in a middle school, and once in a high school. Firearms safe storage awareness may have prevented these traumatic experiences, and they have been proven to save lives. We know that, in the U.S., 4.6 million children live in homes with at least one loaded unlocked firearm. It is estimated that 54% of gun-owning households do not lock all their firearms securely. In 2020 and 2021, there was an unprecedented surge in firearm sales, both nationally and in our state. The increase in firearm sales translates to increased risk when firearms are not securely stored and kept out of the hands of children and teens. School districts can help to normalize the conversation around gun safety and add their important voice to other community advocates by actively engaging parents and caregivers about how to secure firearm safely. We encourage you to pass this common sense resolution for the safety of our schools and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, Dr. Collins. My name is Patrice Sardo. I'm a resident of Williamstown, and I'm speaking to all of you tonight to urge the school committee to pass a Secure Storage Notification Resolution. Massachusetts schools have already undertaken many measures to increase student safety, informing communities about threats and/or relevant gun violence-related issues, and putting additional security in place if warranted. Some schools have implemented threat assessment programs, hardened physical infrastructure, adopted the Sandy Hook Promise Know the Signs programs, and are chosen to implement Alice training. However, something simple is missing. Schools should also proactively inform their communities about the critical importance of secure firearm storage. Schools care about and have a vested interest in all aspects of student safety. Just like messaging on substance abuse, internet safety, fire safety, raising awareness about the life-saving effects of secure gun storage should be included in your safety message. Unfortunately, there is no school district in our country that is immune to gun violence. According to a recent Everytown press release, over 8.5 million K-12 students nationwide are attending schools with firearm storage policies in place already. Over 106 school districts in at least 21 states have passed secure storage resolutions since July 2019. These policies demonstrate a school district's commitment to raising awareness about the life-saving effects of secure storage practices. A Secure Storage Notification Resolution provides, number one, a framework for implementation, are proactive, evidence-based, entail no cost, promote a simple but wide-reaching message, empower the public, and do not create any extra work for teachers. Moving forward with safe storage education of adults through the schools is the first step in a broader, community-wide effort. In May 2021, the Plymouth School District was the first in Massachusetts to adopt a Secure Storage Notification Resolution. Most recently, additional Massachusetts school districts have followed suit with secure storage policies and/or actions. Newburyport, Woburn, Arlington, Framingham, Duxbury, Mount Greylock Regional, Pittsfield, North Adams, Medford, Beverly, Abington, Cambridge, Salem, and Lexington. I urge the school committee to vote yes on the resolution and show that Lenox is the leader we all know it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. 13 seconds left.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hi. My name is Vicky Zakarowitz, and I'm a resident of Pittsfield. I'm here tonight to urge the Lenox School District to pass a Secure Storage Resolution and help raise awareness among both gun owners and non-gun owners about the critical importance of secure firearm storage. Everyone has a role to play. Adopting a resolution shows the school district's long-term commitment, acknowledging this proven evidence-based solution to certain types of gun violence. The resolution would intend for the school district, at minimum, to notify parents and caregivers as soon as possible and at least once yearly about the life-saving effects of secure firearm storage, and their obligation to follow our Massachusetts Safe Storage laws and child access prevention measures. It is an adult's responsibility to secure their firearms, not a child's responsibility not to touch them. Every day that goes by in which this awareness is not front and center with the public presents a risk of youth suicide, child unintentional shooting, or even a shooting or potential firearm homicide. Notifications could be in the form of one or a combination of the following methods undertaken at the school district's discretion: a letter or email to parents, which may or may not require a signature, posting on the school district's website and social media platforms, in the superintendent's newsletter, included in the student handbook, in a press release, and more. In the packets we have given you, there are examples showing some creative ways Massachusetts school districts have chosen to share this information. Each school should decide for themselves what works best for their families. Across the country and in our own state, school districts have used a variety of additional ideas to raise awareness within the school population. Some examples include adult education evenings on topics such as the National PTA-endorse Be Smart program, suicide awareness and prevention, and medical perspectives; also, health and safety fairs, where local community organizations dealing with many aspects of family safety are represented; presentations to school safety and wellness committees, school nurses, guidance, and mental health counselors, and social workers, or on teacher-staff and development days; also, in school safety newsletters and on school health forums to remind adults to store firearms securely, and more. The overarching goal is to normalize the conversation between gun owners and non-gun owners about the need for secure firearm storage as a common good for the community. We encourage schools to implement communication and messaging to educate as many members of the school community as possible, using repetition over time. Schools have broad and unique outreach, they care about student safety, and they have a vested interest in preventing school gun violence, and they should lend their voice to urge and empower the public to help reduce gun violence by enacting this common sense measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to check and see if we have some other presentations that are the reason there's a lot of families here. Do we have any other people that want to speak on this topic? Because what I may do is just switch the agenda. It won't cut anyone off, but if you're on this topic, I'm just wondering if we'll switch to our presentations to the students, and then we can reconvene, if that's okay.
I just need 30 seconds.
Okay.
And then try to go back and get my kit, if that's okay.
My name is Sandy Lacy, and I'm an executive at the Perkins School for the Blind in Watertown. I'm also a visiting lecturer at MIT, so I'm very familiar with school administration and school safety protocols. I am a Lennox resident by choice. My family moved here in 2021, and I actually pulled my daughter from a local private school because I didn't think they were doing enough about school safety. So I would love to see the Lenox Public Schools say yes on the Secure Storage Resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, if we have other comments, are we going to... You're okay to wait for a minute? Okay. Do you want to just switch that? So we had some presentations, that's why we have... It's not the only reason, I don't think. I don't want to assume that I know why everybody's here, but we have some presentations for students, and we want to have a chance to honor them and their families, and then let them decide if they want to stay and learn about building budgets and other things. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Collins. You're welcome, you know.
All right. So, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has notified us of a group of our students who are being recognized for the MCAS Student Achievement Awards. So we're very excited about this. We're going to begin with... We're going to begin with the elementary school and Principal Kelly. And when you come up, please stay, because we want to capture a photo that we can then put on the website and send to your parents.
Okay. We got it. All right.
Welcome, everyone. So I'm very proud to present four awards to some students at Morris Elementary School who are receiving the Student Achievement Award for their great effort on the MCAS task. So first, Gemma Tanner. And is Jerry Bui out there?
most of them are here, but I'm not entirely sure who's here and who's not.
No.
And Jerry, he couldn't make it tonight. So we're just going to take a little picture, guys.
So we're pulling them in from the back here.
Nice job. We're so proud of you. Got it. Thank you. Good job.
So let's begin with Aubrey McDaniel.
If people want to shift, that's okay, right?
Congratulations on that.
Because then we have the middle high school, right?
And I believe we have Parker Hoff here as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. It's nice to see you. Congratulations.
Parker, come on up. Congratulations, buddy. Come up here, we're going to get a picture in just a minute. I think we have Ivan Healy here with us tonight. Come on up, Ivan. Thank you. Congratulations. I think Sam Geller's out there somewhere. Sam, there we go. I know, there's Emery. Emery, come on up. Emery Lipton. Janam Patel. Congratulations, Janam. Lev Dressner. Congratulations, Lev. Elan Davidson. And a couple more. And we had two more. I'm not sure, I don't believe they're with us tonight. Ally Lucier and Jose Vargas. Ally is here? Where's Ally? Okay. So Ally and Jose, we're proud of them, they couldn't make it tonight.
The parents want to come in and take the picture.
Yeah, parents come on in, if you want to get a picture of everybody while they're here.
It's only being split second, kids. And I cut them off.
You're off. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
I know, right? I love when the kids come. It's my favorite. So thank you for those of you that are waiting to speak, if we still have people that want to come to the mic.
Once again.
Thanks for your patience on camera as we shift people around. You can see we're an adaptable bunch.
It was nice to see you. It's been a while since I've been around.
Yes.
This gentleman wants to speak.
Yes. Thank you for your patience. If you... Well, we'll give another minute if people want to come in, and then we'll get your right to it. Do you want to come in? Come on in. Anybody who wants to come in, come on in. If you'd like to have seats, there's chairs over here. So we're going... Congratulations. We're going to... Okay, so we're going to resume public comment. Can you hear okay? If anybody wants to come up to the mic, come on up. He said he can hear okay. I don't know if we need to. Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just here to contribute to the conversation about safe storage.
Okay.
My name's Brian Burkle, class of '88. LMHS, class of '88. I didn't need these in '88, but it feels like yesterday. So anyway, I want to take part in this conversation. I am a gun owner. I've also just retired from the state police after 25 years of service.
Thank you for your service.
Well, thank you. And in that time, I investigated a number of deaths here in Berkshire County. A great number of them were suicides, and a great number of those were a result of firearms. So I'm also the president of the board for the Berkshire Coalition for Suicide Prevention. So I'm here tonight representing that organization. We can't talk about suicide without talking about firearms, and we understand that people die by many means, not just by firearms, but we also recognize that being an owner of a firearm does not make somebody more susceptible to depression or more susceptible to suicidal ideations. But in the event of a crisis, it does make that most lethal means more readily accessible, and it increases the risk of completing a suicide. Two-thirds of all firearm deaths are suicides. More than half of all suicides are the result of firearms. Nationally, that number is 53%. Here in Massachusetts, which has one of the lowest rates of suicide because of a lot of the efforts that are in place and some of the laws that are in place, death by firearm and suicides is 23%, nearly half of the national rate. And that goes through the laws that we have in place. There's a clear nexus to that. And we understand that because feeling suicidal is not itself fatal, it's a state of mind, it's not a trait, and because of that, it can be stopped. And the best way to prevent suicide is to create time and distance between the means and that momentum. So having a firearm, for example, if that's somebody's choice of means, if that's secured properly, it's just enough time where it may disrupt their plan, disrupt their motivation, disrupt their impulse. And most people who are attempting suicide, if their plan is disrupted, they will not go on to find another means, because that was the plan. Nine in 10 people who attempt suicide do not go on to die by suicide at some other point in their life. Nine in 10 people who use a firearm as the means for their suicide will die. So it's nine in 10 and nine in 10. So that just shows how much of an impact firearms have. The impulsivity, of course, plays a big part of that, and a recent study of teens, 20% of teens said that they've seriously considered suicide. Teens are the most impulsive, you know, that's part of being a teen, right? Our kids know where we hide our guns. They know where the candy is, they know where the good food is, they know where the money is, they know where the guns are. It has to be properly secured. Just having a secured house or a secured car is not properly secured by the law or in practicality. So I just want to extend my support for the efforts here to encourage people to follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who wants to speak today? Just get that. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. As you are, those of you who are here, you're aware that we kind of went out of order to accomplish, and thank you for your patience around that, and to give those presentations to students. I think I will suggest that we continue out of order and move to the... Yeah, no, okay, we're unfinished business. If we just move to the third agenda item, which is the Be Smart Resolution. And you can all stay for our policy manual review if you want to. Since I know why you're here, I think we'll move to that item on the agenda. So just to explain our process, we had previously had a discussion at our meeting about the Be Smart Resolution. There were some questions, there were some proposed changes, and some concerns that were expressed. So we chose to table it, have some time to consider and think about what we wanted to do. If someone in this body makes a motion to move forward with this resolution, and it's seconded, we'll have a discussion, and then we'll have a vote, and that's the process. And if we pass the resolution, either in an edited form or in its presented form, then the superintendent will then move forward with his work, which he already does a lot of work around safety, but pursuant to the resolution. Okay? So, having said that, do we have any... Well, we shared the text of the resolution, right? We shared the most recent text. I think the feedback the last time was looking for direct communication home to families rather than in the backpack. And then the other suggestion was that we not, I think Mr. Cass made the suggestion that we not, or had expressed a concern about the process of having people sign, almost like signing an affirmation. And I think those two bits of feedback caused us to table the resolution. So, Dr. Collins, if you want to tell us where we are at that?
Sure. Would you like me to read the revised resolution? Or just the changes?
Do we all have a copy of it? Do we feel like we need it read?
I think just the changes. I'd like to hear just the changes from the last time we were here.
Yeah. I don't think we need to.
Okay. So, the whereas is, with all of the statistics about unsecured firearms and children's deaths remain the same, the resolutions are what changed. So, be resolved that we, the school committee, direct the superintendent to create an appropriate letter to parents and guardians explaining the importance of secure gun storage and the legal obligations to protect minors from accessing unsecured guns. Be it resolved that we, the school committee, direct the superintendent to continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, health agencies, and nonprofits to collaborate and support efforts to inform district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes.
So those were the changes. And then we've since had, we've had some conversation with our law enforcement. Let me see if I can find it, sorry. We've had some conversations with Chief O'Brien, and he communicated, I'm just looking for the paper that we had it on. Do you know where that is? Okay. That would be great, yeah. Yeah, that'd be great.
Lenox Public Schools, with the support of Lenox Police Department, announce a community initiative with Be Smart, an organization dedicated to providing resources and raising awareness about how to securely store guns and why it matters.
And so that was as a result of several conversations that you had, Dr. Collins, and then Ms. Kirby, you also had a conversation with the chief about this resolution.
Yes.
And, having said that, if we wanted to put this on the floor, we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to support the Be Smart Resolution.
Second. And is there any further discussion or questions, comments?
My only question is, I appreciate the resolution, but getting back to our other conversation, I'm just wondering if the communication is going to be strictly between the adults and the superintendent, and it would not be disseminated throughout the students' backpacks.
Right. So, to create an appropriate letter to parents and guardians that will not go home backpack express.
Okay. Yes. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of supporting the Be Smart Resolution as shared and discussed tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I'm steering.
Okay. Thank you very much. So good carries. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for the information. Really do appreciate it. Very important.
Right. I just, in your packets, there are samples of digital communication in many different school districts.
Okay. Thank you. And we can certainly have more discussions with Dr. Collins now that it's a resolution.
We'd love to.
I would welcome that.
Not giving you, but yes. Communication is important, so thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. So we do that. Yeah, we know. We're going to do that next. Yeah, sorry. I know, he wants to get to basketball night.
Yes.
The senior trip. Yeah, Alex, got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So do you want to... Just sorry.
Yes, no, it's fine.
So we'll do the... We're going to continue to move through the superintendent's report, because we have some students, a student here that needs to get to something else, and then we'll get back to our unfinished business. We'll get to all of it.
And having said that, if we wanted to put this on the floor, we need a motion. And a second.
I'll make a motion to support the Be Smart Resolution.
Second. And is there any further discussion or questions, comments?
My only question is, I appreciate the resolution, but getting back to our other conversation, I'm just wondering if the communication is going to be strictly between the adults and the superintendent? It would not be disseminated throughout the students' backpacks?
Right. So to create an appropriate letter to parents and guardians that will not go home backpack express.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of supporting the Be Smart Resolution as shared and discussed tonight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
I'm steering.
Okay. Thank you very much. So good carries. Thank you very much for your support. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for the information. Really do appreciate it. Very important.
Right. I just, in your packets, there are samples of digital communication in three different districts.
Okay. Thank you. And we can certainly have more discussions with Dr. Collins now that it's a resolution.
We'd love to.
I would welcome that.
Not giving you, but yes. Communication is important. So thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts. Oh, yeah. So we do that. Yeah, we know. We're gonna do that next. Yeah, sorry. I know. He wants to get to basketball night.
Yes.
The senior trip. Yeah, Alex. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So do you want to... Sorry.
Yes, no, it's fine.
So we'll do the, we're gonna continue to move through the superintendent's report because we have some students, a student here that needs to get to something else, and then we'll get back to our unfinished business. We'll get to all of it.
Okay. Alex is gonna come forward to speak about the senior class trip, and a vote would be required because it's out of state.
Hello.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Alex Fuster. I'm the senior class president here for Lennox High School. And I just want to get your guys' approval for the senior class trip to be out of state at Coney Island.
And can you just tell us a little bit more about the plan?
So the plan would be to leave Monday, June 3, at around 7:00 a.m. and arrive back at Lennox High School around 10:00 p.m. Currently, out of the sixty-two kids in our class, a little shy of fifty have said that they would love to go on the trip. So we're hopefully gonna get two coach buses with roughly ten chaperones.
We've got about eight or ten lined up, depending on the number of students that actually are speaking, yeah.
Great.
And they'll have the opportunity to use their music park there, their sport block, beach, so kind of a really nice way to count off there.
Just be really careful with the wizard guy and the coins. You may not know what I'm referring to, but everybody else in this room does. Anybody have any questions or if not, a motion to approve of the senior trip? It's gonna be here before you know it.
Yeah. I move to approve the senior class trip to Coney Island.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm in support.
There you go. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You are approved. Have fun. And thank you for your patience. I was supposed to get to you earlier, but we got busy. Thank you. Good luck. Okay. Do we have anyone here for Nordic Ski, or is that... Who's presenting? Is Jeremiah presenting Nordic Ski?
Okay, please.
Get that one out of the way.
I'm here on behalf of the high school Nordic Ski Team, and I'm humbly requesting that they be allowed to travel to Prospect Ski Area in, I've forgotten where in Vermont exactly, Woodford, thank you, in Woodford, Vermont, just east of Bennington. It's a wonderful facility. For a variety of reasons, the championships are scheduled to be there this year, and because it's out of state, we need to request the committee's blessing. The championships have been shifted by a day, so we're not at the last minute anymore. We've actually got a full forty-eight hours before the championship. It's gonna be skied on Wednesday, and with the committee's blessing.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the request to allow the Nordic Ski Team to travel to Vermont for their championship?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Aye. And good luck to the team. And I don't know if they're gonna get snow tomorrow or not. We'll see.
Thank you for your approval.
Thank you. Yeah, right. Everybody's asking. Okay. So should we move back up to...
Yeah, do you want Mr. Vaughn to go before the...
Okay, yeah, is that technically under our subcommittees under building?
It's under new business.
Oh, there we are. Okay, sorry. All right. So now we're gonna go, just to keep everybody on their toes, to new business and invite Mr. Vaughn to come up and talk to us about the town school committee building update, please and thank you.
Okay. And thank you for allowing me to speak. As you know, I've been the chairman of the school building committee, and recently we had, and we've been submitting to the MSBA a statement of interest the last two years and intend to continue doing that. But we are also pursuing the idea of going forward perhaps on our own, building a freestanding building behind the high school with a connection, a skybridge connection to the building. This came out as a conversation a couple of meetings ago, back in January, this concept. And it allows us to perhaps do several things. One is to, without working with MSBA, we won't have to wait perhaps a decade more, unknown really how much time, before they would really notice us. Our school, generally speaking, looks pretty good compared to many of the schools that MSBA works with. And so, you know, we just have no clue when we would be selected. And also, because of the numbers of Lennox students working with MSBA, there are many difficulties with working with them because with fewer Lennox students, they tell you what you can and can't build. And they might, you know, they might recommend something smaller than what we'd like. But what we're actually talking about is maybe building a six-to-eight classroom, maybe like twelve thousand square feet, fifteen thousand square feet, somewhere in that neighborhood building that would have state-of-the-art science classrooms and some additional spaces to house other programs that we would articulate with the faculty and administration over the next, you know, few months before, you know, we get into design work and all that kind of stuff. So what we're recommending is that we fund a feasibility study. And this is something, as you recall, you know, Orin had suggested we do this last year, and the recommendation from MSBA was not to do it because we'd then have to repeat everything with MSBA later. So it's a, so conceptually, you know, we're kind of back where the recommendation came last year. But with this time, all of, you know, us saying, if we go it alone without MSBA, we have greater flexibility as to what we do. And we try to build just what we need. Right now, we have fifty-one teachers and forty teaching spaces. This would allow us to, you know, cut that gap dramatically. We think it could potentially happen in a five- or six-year period rather than an unknown period. And so what we would be requesting, and this doesn't require a vote, I mean, the town manager is going to put this in as a capital, in a capital budget, two to three hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study that would allow us to go forward with, A, is it even possible to build up there with the ledge and all, or would there be other recommendations as to where the building might, you know, take place? And so we would get a full understanding of what might be possible. There would be no interruptions to education during this time because the building would be built independently of the kids being in school. The kids would continue with classes. When the building gets built, we would then try to proceed at some point to a Phase Two and Three, which would be, you know, renovating and reconfiguring the current space that the science rooms and other second-story high school wing programs, you know, are in right now. So we would, while kids are in the new building, we could be renovating some of the spaces upstairs. And then subsequently, and we would ask the people doing the feasibility study to kind of give us a phasing plan, a kind of a master plan of how we might tackle some of the other things within the building. But what we'd be asking for initially would be the funds to go ahead with the feasibility study and then, depending on where that leads us, funds for actually going on with architectural drawings and stuff, which would be a further step down the road. The recommendation is that, or the suggestion is that typically, a feasibility study of this size, which is not an enormous size, might take six months. So it's possible we could be back at a special town meeting in November, or perhaps just maybe we have to go on to May, the May town meeting, with the next, whatever the next request might be. And, you know, there's a lot of unknowns there. We're also talking about creating a different traffic pattern for the buses, having them swing up around the building and coming down the other side, and having a drop-off point being up there behind the building, which would really free up some of the safety issues we've had with the current parking lot and the parent drop-offs and buses and parents, you know, all there at the same time. The school building committee feels this is a fiscally prudent direction to go, rather than talking about maybe a forty or fifty million dollar building. We could be talking somewhere a third of that cost possibly. Those are unknown figures at this time, so it's just speculative. The new building would be built with all the new energy codes, which also creates opportunities for some creative, you know, creative use of space, but also, you know, we have to comply with the new energy efficient building codes. There could be some, you know, different ways of heating and different ways of using solar that, you know, could help with some of the utility costs. The new building would have to have its own bathrooms and its own utilities because it would be, we couldn't tie it into the existing structure. And I guess that's about it. So I just, this is really informational because I think we're, you know, the plan is that we'll go ahead. And the only other thing is, it's possible, if there were money left at the end of the year, because we want to get the teacher and administration input before they leave for the summer. I mean, it's conceptual, you know, is what we'd be looking for. It's like, well, you know, because with fifty-one teachers and forty teaching spaces, not everyone's gonna move into this new building, you know. But at least get an idea, you know, three years ago, we were talking with the faculty about some of the needs for, you know, space needs that they had. And we think that we could address quite a bit of it with the new building and some reconfiguring of the old building. And I think this could be a very positive thing for Lennox, and the town manager's totally on board. And we think we're moving in, one of the selectmen who attends our meetings is on board and believes this is really a fiscally responsible way to approach this. So.
I admire the creativity in thinking. I think it's a great idea. I'm already visualizing it, you know. But, you know, just the cost savings alone, but still allowing you to get the space that's needed, to not interrupt the educational process, and then going to another phase. I applaud all the work that went into it and the out-of-the-box thinking.
I mean, one of the biggest concerns that we've had is what might be triggered by opening up the current building. And what we understand from Building Code and from Chapter Thirty-One of the Building Code is that if you're talking about connecting a skywalk or pedestrian walkway of some sort, that would not trigger the things that we were afraid of before.
Is there any sense at all what you have back there as far as like ledge or any of that?
A lot of ledge.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah. And so there's gonna be site, there'll be site concerns that will come up. And they may say, well, but you could do something down here, whereas flatter, but again, that's all speculative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or anything? Thank you. Thank you for all your work. We can't quite retire you. All right, thank you. Okay. So do you want to, should we do policy and then we'll go down to building? So I'm gonna bring us back to unfinished business. So what we have are the review and approval of Policy Section K, which we had started discussing a few months ago, and then had some questions, and then we've been dealing with budget. But we also have on the agenda, because we weren't sure if we'd be ready, is Policy Section G, but you'd like to move that.
So we finished, yeah, we did finish G, but it was finished on Friday afternoon. So I would like to have some more time to provide updates via email to you all to review, and we will put that on the next agenda. And Bob, you're welcome to present K if you'd like. No, just kidding. While you're here, get out.
So, yeah, okay, so go ahead.
We are, like Ronnie said, here for second, technically, third, right?
We didn't really read it because there've just been other things.
So attached in the agenda linked is the updated clean version of Section K, which is Community Relations. And I believe last time, there were a couple of questions, mostly with the question being, what do we do if a policy is removed and an issue comes up where we're looking, right, what policy do we refer to? I'm just gonna go through the couple that I mentioned during that time. One was KHA, which was Public Solicitations. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. KI, School Visitors. MASC removed this policy section about five years ago. I think, Orin, you had a question about just that, what was, you know, what did that look like in absence of policy? So Ronnie and I kind of together are gonna refer to a couple of sections. I'm going to refer to Section C in our policy manual, specifically CHD, which is Administration and Policy Absence. When action must be taken within the school system where the committee has provided no guides for administrative action, the superintendent will have the power to act. The superintendent's decisions, however, will be subject to the review by the committee. So if we were ever in a situation where somebody had requested to come into the school, just using that eliminated policy as an example, that would be a decision between that party, the superintendent, and the building principals.
And were there any other questions or comments about the proposed revisions to K?
Well, so I mean, I think there were a few sections like this that get removed, right? It would also be, sorry, just going up to the table content, KEB and KEC, I think are both gone now.
Public, KEC, Public Complaints About Curriculum or Instructional Matters. And I'll turn that over to Ronnie, just because she has eye open here.
Yeah, so I went through to try to, for my own self, to answer that question, because it's a good one. Or it's like, well, we eliminate something, what controls? And so the reference to C was one, and the other is that under our full I policy, which the Governance and Policy Committee hasn't reviewed yet, under IIAE is a policy reconsideration of instructional resources. So actually, I think the two were duplicative. This one, I don't know if MASC is gonna suggest any changes, but we'll have the ability to debate that one because it's still on the books, so to speak. And that is, deals with the issue of instructional resources. So what we actually had was two policies, somewhat duplicative and overlapping. MASC's recommendation is that we remove the one, and then we would still, we still have the opportunity to discuss IIAE, which is titled Reconsideration of Instructional Resources. And it goes into the process of if someone were to choose to challenge something within the district, and then what process would follow, including a reference to district adopted procedures. I'll turn it over to Dr. Collins, that having seen that, we had a conversation about it when we became aware of the situation that happened in Great Barrington, to see where our policies were. And Dr. Collins has been, you know, just reviewing that with his administrative group. But this addresses that issue. And I think that's what's controlling at this point if we remove the other policy. And I don't know if you want to address any of that, but I know you've been...
The principals and I met following what happened in Great Barrington. And then I know that Dr. Ames brought it to his administrative team. And then following that, we had conversations with some teachers. And we're confident that if that were to, that sort of thing were to happen here, well, first of all, had a conversation with the police chief, and that sort of thing's not gonna happen here. But if, for some reason, it were something similar, we are confident that with our, the guidelines that our librarian uses would protect us and prevent that sort of thing from happening. So we're very confident that we're in a good spot.
Right. And we have this policy on the books, and then if there's additional discussions in the future when it's time to review this one, that would be up to MASC's recommendation than our discussion about where we want to go with it. So we haven't gotten to that yet.
IIAE says, made in a reasonable period of time, using district adopted procedures.
Right.
And Section K, I guess, would be one district adopted procedure. Do we have other district adopted procedures that govern?
So we do have, so there are procedures for the challenging of material. And we also align with the Library Bill of Rights, which spells out how to respond to some things. So again... So again, we're, we're confident, not that, you know, everything shouldn't be periodically reviewed, but at this point, if something happened, I feel like we'd be on pretty solid ground that we have a, that we have a procedure. At this point, we, we really haven't had to, we haven't had to test it.
And IIAE also, I will note, does have sort of a review period and then ultimately if somebody was unsatisfied with that, we would, it would be appealed to us. So ultimately, some of this, like we said, hasn't really been challenged or tested, but we do have both a process within the school. And if someone is unhappy with that process, they would still come to us and we would have the opportunity to make a decision. According to this, once we've made the decision and we actually have the fact that we wouldn't have to keep making the same decision over and over again, there's a provision. But again, when this comes up for our review, if somebody has a recommendation edit that, that we all agree to, we can certainly deal with that. But I think it, I think it leaves us with, this is the policy that controls and the other one that I think was a little vague and maybe duplicative, this one seems to have more detail to me, I think.
And once we get to I, we might very well choose to combine them somehow like we've done in the past.
Right.
We just haven't gotten it yet.
And I know that initially, I think in one of my updates to you all, initially when this first came out, I said, boy, I'm, I, I am struggling to find our district approved policy. But following the conversations with staff and the administration, I'm now confident that we actually, that we have in place what we would need to, to address this.
So then you had, so that was one. I don't know if there are any more questions on that. That was KEC, right?
So, well, Orin just brought up KEB and KEC.
Okay.
So that and.
That was KEB.
KEB is public complaints about school. KEC is public complaints about curriculum or instruction, instructional matters. And then KI was school visitors. Any questions about the updated version?
Do we have a vote as to the adoption of the policy K as, as our new portion of our policy book, policy manual? Do we have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work. I know this is hard. It's a lot of back and forth, so thank you very much. Team, thank you. Policy team.
Proceed.
Okay. So now that brings us to, let's see, we're going to get back in order here. We're to add capital discussion, correct?
Yes.
Unless you had any other highlights and recognitions, we kind of did a really nice highlight right there.
Yes, we did. Nope.
Thanks, Bob.
All right.
Oh, all right. Thank you. I'm going to back up all the way and say, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 29th, 2024?
I'll make a motion. Except for the minutes of January 29th, 24 as presented.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye? I knew we were, all right.
This is, this is your, or anything?
Thank you for that, Kim. Because, you know, Amy will really appreciate it. She was here. All right. Well, we're cooking along. We're doing okay.
So this presentation will review some of the target areas for this year that we have been working on. And then moving forward into '25, what we're going to be looking at. And then we also have a five-year timeline that is included in this presentation and in the link that I sent you that brings it out to 2028. So the capital investment is for our buildings. This building is mainly taken care of by the town. If we have something in our particular office that we want, we can use some of our capital appropriation to get it done. But this building is a town responsibility. The two schools are the school district's responsibility. So we have Morris and we have the middle and high school. Just to review what capital projects, our purchases would be 5,000 or over and then a useful life of at least minimally three years. And the revenues include appropriation at the town meeting and that number is set by the town. Typically, Chris will come and say, I'm looking at this number for next year. In the last few years, it's been 400,000 appropriated, recommended by the town manager and then approved at the town meeting. And we use potential grant programs. ESSER could be one, would have been or is going to be, there's a schedule for a part of it, for capital improvements at the buildings. And as I said, we have a full spreadsheet with the five-year kind of look ahead. So we have the two buildings and these are the, the information, basic information on the buildings. LM MHS has square footage of 117,000. Morris has square footage of 56,000. They were both renovated, built in the 60s, renovated in the 90s. Maintenance personnel at both. We have more at the middle and high. It's a larger building. So we look, we're looking at 5.5 custodians. And then at Morris, we have four. Both buildings have a head custodian that typically will work the early day to early afternoon or mid-afternoon shift. LM MHS has two that work the day shift. There's more kids and it's a, again, a bigger building. So and the rest of the custodial staff will work evening shifts to clean after the kids go home and the, the staff, teaching personnel go home, they'll go into the classrooms and do their areas to, to maintain it.
Just, I made to point out, the square footage at the middle high school is over double the square footage at the LM MHS.
So we focused on a few things in the last few years and that continued through 2024. Safety and security, a big project that was started in '23, finished in '24, was the FOB access points for security so that the doors are locked. Personnel have FOB access to open the, the doors to get in. But other than that, the, the keys have, any that we've kept the locks have been rekeyed and the FOB access is new so that we don't have community members, maybe, and, you know, an old coach that is no longer coaching, could have had a key to the building. We've eliminated that with this project. We continue always to do radio additions and replacements. So the radios will last for quite a few years. But if we change the sort of signal, we have to upgrade the radio, so it's, it, they run hand in hand. But every year we're replacing radios, just like we do a renewal cycle with computers. We did complete a server replacement for our camera system this year and that was, we had to get it done, otherwise we would not have had that system to use. So technology, we have the infrastructure upgrades that Randy has continued to organize and oversee. We've replaced the CAD computers in that classroom in LM MHS. We have the renewal cycle computers and that's every year in this, in this appropriation. We include those. It's about $37,000, maybe 37.5 at times. We've purchased a new copier for Morris, one that was at the end of its life, needed to be replaced. And the pure storage array, which houses all of our servers. It's one big server that has buckets for the other servers. So that's all been either done, completed or close to an in-process. So maintenance of building and fields, another area that we, we have to pay attention to, but the athletic fields, the repair and maintenance, every year we apportion probably 37,000 to 40,000 to take care of those. A utility tractor was purchased for Morris, a scag mower for the middle high. We've done improvements to the central office safe room, which is where the personnel files are kept with the new flooring and sort of getting rid of the whole shelving and basic clutter. But we did improve the, the, the look as well as the, the bones of it. There was a flooring repair done to the science lab that had to be done. There was outlets that are in the floor that had been covered but had to be actually filled in because there were holes being created when a piece of furniture, like a desk or chair, was moved onto it. So that's been done. The carpeting replacement at the library will be done over.
April break.
April break. That's been scheduled. And included in that is also guidance offices. We're going to try to get those done, as well as the main office of the middle and high school. And elevator improvement at both schools, there's a new code. We have to come up to code. That's about 25,000. That's been going to be scheduled, not scheduled yet, but is on the docket to, to have a purchase order input and then these, the work scheduled. There was concrete repair at the floor in the hallway down by the.
Band office.
Thank you. The band office that was necessary, needed to be done. So that's been completed as well. Morris playground is on the ticket to be done this year. We're hoping to have everything solidified and either the playground installed in the spring or late June, early summer. So planned for 2025, these are the requests that we've received from the two buildings, the schools, the principals, head custodians and other people that are involved with the buildings. And then the district-wide and technology requests. So we're looking for new speakers in classrooms at Morris. They go into the, the ceiling in the classrooms. New clocks at Morris. More new speakers at Morris, that's a duplication, sorry about that. Repairing windows in, in the west wing of the building, they're very difficult to open. So we're going to be looking at repairing those. And the flooring in the west wing, there's quiet rooms. Removing the carpeting and replacing it with tile for those rooms. A new auto scrubber, which really helps the custodians get the floors nice and shiny easier for them. And roof sections, always, we have to include this every year because we do have sections of the roof that are at times failing and we have to set aside money in case there's a larger repair. And then at LM MHS, they're requesting fencing around the dumpster so that they can keep it sort of closed in. It can become unsightly if there are, if there's stuff dropped by the dumpster, so the fence around it will keep it closed so that there's less random dropping of stuff. And if we are doing it, then at least it's presentable to the, from the road in the, in the, the parking lot in the side of the school. And a dust collection system rebuilt for the wood shop. That's been talked about for a few years. We are going to do it this year. Roof painting over near the duffin, it's a metal roof and there are, it needs to be repainted at this point. You can see a lot of the, the paint is chipping away, so we want to make that more presentable. Jeremiah has requested a welcome sign and the welcome sign would be a programmable sign that you can say, you know, don't forget parent-teacher conferences this Thursday, no school on Friday, vote for the school budget on Thursday. So things like that. And it would be a communication tool as well for, for people dropping the kids off. If you drive down, a couple of the schools have it. I think Farmington River has one that's off to the side and they've got their dates sort of listed as to when their, when school is or not. But that would be somewhere on the property near the front of the road so that it's visible. We need to repair the vent hoods in the science labs. We have two that right now need to be replaced. We're looking into single switch door closing, which really is if there's an emergency, there's a way to close the doors so that access is limited to the interior of the building, so it's a safety, safety issue. Outdoor tables for the kids to eat lunch outside of the cafeteria. And I'm going to look at that in my conversations with Jeremiah. That may be something that the food service department can cover in their fund. So I want to take a look at that before we use capital. We'll try to use that fund. It's a healthy account right now.
Replacement tables?
What?
Must be replacement tables, they don't get forever.
Yeah. Not inside the cafeteria, it's for outside.
Yeah, the junk truck, yeah.
And the bottle fill stations, which sort of, they retrofit a regular bubbler and because all the kids have their own water bottles now, they can fill their bottles instead of using the regular. It's a, it's a lot easier and I think it actually keeps the water, not on the floor.
Several game changers, just don't fill their bottles from the other.
Yeah.
We have three of them currently. They have 11 levers in the whole building. We're not looking to replace them all, just a few.
And also vape detectors, which would be placed in the restrooms. And these would detect any sort of vaping. There's CBD oil, there's nicotine. Do you want to speak about this a little?
Sure. So vape detectors, for better or worse, is something that a lot of schools in the county are, have implemented, to different degrees in there. The word is that some schools are having more success than others. This is not a fix-all solution, but it's certainly a step we can take for a reasonable expense. And just given the fact that we don't have a lot of other levers with this issue, which is affecting a lot of our, a lot of our students in the middle high school, it's something we can do. Lee's had a pretty good experience with these, they implemented this last year. Jen Dries spoke to me very passionately about this on several occasions. It's something we really need to implement at some level. And I think with some, some strategic placement in the middle lane, it could go a long way toward keeping kids safe. So I will make a good decision on that.
Thank you. And then the roof sections, reserved for any issues that come up. And then the third bucket is district-wide, yes?
Outdoor basketball hoops.
Oh, I missed those.
Is that for?
We're hoping to install two out in the back. It's a level concrete area for our kids when they go out for recess or, yeah, so that they can, when the weather's nice, they can shoot around and release some energy and get some fresh air and get some exercise. So I think it would be two.
Yes.
District-wide and technology requests. So fields and maintenance, again, every year you'll see this on the list. Copier replacements, we have two at LM MHS that are at the end of their, or nearing the end of their lifecycle. We need to get those replaced next year. New camera system. We are currently in process of retrieving quotes for replacement of some of our outdoor cameras, which are a cybersecurity risk, just for the way that they are made. So we're getting those quotes, but we will be looking at replacing more and more cameras in both schools. And then, of course, the renewal devices, the laptops for, and the Chromebooks for the kids. And then continued security improvements, working on doors, making sure that they close properly, lock properly, and having interior locks on the second set of doors that can be opened only from inside. So we're working on that. And that's, that's a basic recommendation from the security, smart security firm, which I think would enable the school to have more control of who enters that second set of doors.
Can I ask a question about that? It came up actually last year with students writing a letter. It came up, actually, last year with students writing a letter in the civics project encouraging that we look at handicap accessibility in wheelchairs. Like typically the doors have a button, right, to open and close. Is that part of this? Could it be part of this, to be able to have doors that are barriers for access for people who aren't mobile or struggle with the door opening and closing?
So, we do have, we do. But are they not operating?
We don't. There's been a little conversation about this. Forgive me if there's some history I'm unaware of, but the conversation was not so much about our main student entry doors, but rather the duffin entrance.
Oh.
And building capacity whereby when the doors are unlocked for a performance, we were expecting the public to enter. Under those circumstances, we could install a button that someone in a wheelchair, someone in a walker, could hit, you know, six feet, 10 feet in front of the door, and it would open. But that was the entrance we were talking about, by the duffin.
Yeah.
It only functioned when the doors were unlocked, when we were expecting them to open.
Again, I don't know, and there are students who are, might, or adults, anybody in the building who has to access a certain place if the doors are... Sometimes, you know, you have to pull it towards you, and if you're a person who's not mobile, maybe you can't do that. So I guess I'm saying if there's an opportunity to double-check on that, make sure that we're providing access, not lessening any security, but certainly, you know, thinking in terms of people being able to run around the building, right, without having someone assist them. That's the access, right?
Yeah.
So that'd be great, if we can do that. And I think the duffin being a place where the public does come, families, public, town meeting, all of these things would be really important to work on. If it's hard, I think we can make that happen.
So future, beyond next year, into the future, we're looking at a larger upgrade or repair of the Morris roof. That cost would be 750 to 800,000, perhaps a little bit more by the time we get there. Window replacements whenever required, again, another 50 to 200,000. And we may, maybe where we can do it in segments. So tackle the west wing this year and go to the next most problematic area. And replacement of the second playground at Morris, again, for a cost of about 175 to LM MHS, upgrade or repair of the roof, and that would be closer to a million, perhaps a little bit over for the size of the building. And then we've been talking about a parking lot upgrade, and maybe this could be morphed into something else if we go through with the other project, but right now it's on there to see, just to keep it there so that we know it's something that we need to look at eventually. District-wide and technology, new phone systems at both schools. They run about 100,000 or so for new phone systems. So we're looking right now at 2026, if not for two, one, and then the next year, another one. Infrastructure improvements, which are the switches. We did replace some core switches at LM MHS, but these are switches that go in, that the internet, allows the internet to go into the classrooms. So they're more in the classrooms, different set of switches. So that will continue over the years. And then, of course, always looking at safety and security for the buildings. And there are some grant potential in those areas. Maya has, sometimes each year, they'll put a notice out that they have a safety and security grant that is available for certain purchases. So if what we need falls in that, we would be able to apply for it. So Bill, Dr. Collins always keeps his eyes open for grants, and, you know, the principals do too, when they hear of something that could be useful. And I check the state sites, but if they hear of something that could be useful, there's a conversation to see if it's what we need at this time or going forward. This is the capital schedule plan. It's a link. So that'll bring you to a large spreadsheet over to the left. There's notes, priority, one, two, three, four, or five. One is, we want to get it done sooner than later. In-process means we've started it. We're still working on it. Completed means it's done. And then it's broken up by Morris, then LM MHS, then district-wide. And it carries it out until '28, which we have the larger projects out there for the roof. And if the project at LM MHS goes forward with the additional building, that would change some of this scenario, but wouldn't be included in here except for an appropriation by the town. And if the town decided to bond, we would put it under that column. And this is a living document, so it changes. So if you look at it one day and then it's different the next, that's why.
Melissa, I have a question. Living document related, but one of the main items for FY '25 is this retile personnel storage area, but it also says it, but it was targeted for 2024. Do you know what, it was row 71 in the spreadsheet?
It's in 2024, correct? Or is it in '25?
It's in the '25 column.
Okay. So it needs to go from '25 to '24 because we did it.
Okay. So the money has been spent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I guess the related question would just be that it feels like our capex overall this year will be quite low compared to prior years. Is that...
No, I think we'll be over 400,000. We do have some remaining from previous years. It rolls forward. So I'm reserving, in case the feasibility study happens. I want to reserve about $100,000 of money so that we can get the work done prior to the end of the year because the new appropriation from the town won't be able to be used until July 1. So I want to reserve that. And the playground itself is probably $200,000. So that is not included in those numbers. Or it is on the Morris side, it's the 300,000. I added it today. So I do think we'll be over, but we have access from previous two years. We had one year where there was a lot of, not a lot being done, but we've gotten back into the groove.
And so the total, if you think about sort of what's going to be on the town warrant at the end of the day, that would be basically...
This year for '25?
Yeah.
So the town manager has said he's recommending 400,000. He will recommend either 200,000 or 300,000 for the feasibility study. So this year, the appropriation number should be as much as perhaps 700,000 if he doesn't reduce what we use that we currently have, or if he keeps it the same just in case it might go over. So I'm looking at probably, I think he's looking at 700,000. He may want to drop it to 650 or 600, but that would cover our $400,000 appropriation for buildings plus the feasibility study for the new addition.
Any other questions?
Just kind of curious, in the capital projects for '24 and for '25, can you just give a sense of which ones, the size of the ticket items, the individual tickets, are there big ones within there that, say, dominate '24 in the different categories?
Yeah. So the door security, the FOB access, that was a big project. That was a lot of dollars. That began in '23, and then the project was done, and then we realized there were a couple of more areas that we needed to secure. So total, all in that one, was about 90,000.
So it's a good portion of that.
Yeah.
And just to speak to that, when you are on a master key system instead of the FOBS, if somebody loses a key or it's stolen, the security is gone and you'd have to rekey the entire building. With the FOB, you just go into the computer and you deactivate it, and it doesn't work. It also allows, if there are users that have a user FOB, they only have access during a specific time to be in the building, and it won't let them in another time. It also indicates if the stolen FOB or somebody who doesn't have access at another time tries to come at 3:00 in the morning, it would alert us that they attempted it, even though, and which FOB it was, even if they weren't let in. So it's vastly, vastly better, and money-saving versus having to rekey every time a key goes missing.
And the server replacement for the camera system was about 64,000. So those, technology, infrastructure tends to take a big bulk of it. The copiers, probably this year 15, next year 30.
With a service agreement in there, too?
Yes. We have to pay additionally for the service agreements.
Does that dovetail with our others?
Yeah. Yeah. And we purchased off the state contract. So the terms of the state contract dictate what we get. Years ago, we used to get free service. They changed it. Now we pay for the service and get a really good deal in the copiers. We really do pay much less than the open market.
And the playground?
The playground is a big ticket.
That's great.
The elevator code repair, 25,000 is the lowest quote we received for both buildings, so 12.5 at each.
And all the details in that link?
Yes. Well, the dollar figures that we know at this point, a lot of it's estimated for the future years, but for '25, we've got some reliable quotes that we think will be what in the ballpark it ends up costing.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So what does that leave us?
Staffing update?
Do you have any?
I do. We want to thank Ruth Bloom from the Morris Elementary. She's announced her retirement, and we want to thank her for her service, for her years of service and dedication, and she will be missed.
What position was she?
She was a kindergarten, wasn't she, kindergarten parent?
Kindergarten.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's good for her, and we'll miss her. But thank you. Thank you for that. We do have some people that are announcing their retirement, and good for them. Others will, at some future time, right?
I know we talked about the contracted paraprofessional position, but we're still waiting, before anyone comes in, there's a security check, and we're just waiting for that process to be complete, even though they go through their own service. We do our own Cory and fingerprinting check.
Okay. That's just a follow-up.
And we're just waiting. As soon as that stuff comes back, be able to announce that to you.
Okay. Great. Okay. So that puts us with our subcommittees. I mean, you presented on policy. Do you have anything else you want to add from governance and leadership?
We are almost done with our policy review project, finally. So we did, completed G on Friday. We will tackle I in a couple weeks.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that work. Human resources, Orin?
We met sometime since our last meeting. The last school committee meeting talked about PD Day, which sounds like was very successful. A lot of good feedback from the teachers about that. Talked a little bit about process for coach evaluation, which I know was also discussed in the TLC meeting. And then also started to think about, we have no collective bargaining going on this spring, but it will begin again in the fall, and so making sure we know anything we need to do to be prepared for that.
Great. Thank you. So yes, as you just noted, we had a teaching, learning, and culture committee meeting last Wednesday, two weeks ago, on the 31st, and we did talk about how it is that we go about reviewing and evaluating our coaches in our other stipended positions. Got a little bit more information about how that's happening. Some of the evaluation instruments aren't necessarily part of what we do with the teaching contract, but we, there's some suggested ones through MIAA, and we were having conversations about how we can... It's beginning, right? So how is it going to be beginning, and then how are we going to circle back and do some evaluations and get standards for our stipended positions, particularly coaches? And had some conversations, too, about good communication around our athletic programs and making sure that our families and our fans are following good school spirit, but within the appropriate behaviors and treating each other well, and how we might message about that a little bit more, right? We had that conversation. And then we also talked about the ongoing surveys. I know you and your leadership team are working on a future presentation to us about what you found from the survey results, right?
Climate survey, correct.
We talked about the students, and you gave us a little preview of some of what you're looking at. And, you know, we had another conversation, too, just about how are we doing with outcomes relative to bullying, and we'll continue to talk about that. Maybe in the future, we can hear a little bit more from, maybe from the students that are involved in the No Place for Hate program that they're doing. That might be a good idea. Yeah. So that's what we have. And then finance, of course. Go ahead with that.
I just met with Mary Beth Mitz, who's liaison from the select board, and walked through the budget. It was a very good discussion. She was very supportive of it, said she didn't have any concerns herself and was. Would be discussing with the full select board, I believe, tomorrow or Wednesday, sometime this week. And so we'll see if they have any other feedback, but I thought it was a very good discussion.
Yes. And based the current school building?
Uh, yeah.
Right?
Everything has gone and brought to me.
Some really great, wonderful, great, creative discussions happening there, and that's a good, you have a good number of people on that larger committee, too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I have just one question about the school building committee. Is the, so the vote to appropriate for the feasibility study will be at town meeting in May. That would appropriate money to begin spending in July. Well, as to your point, we may have some money that we could start spending sooner. Is there, are we, will we sort of be putting out bids and so forth even starting now, or what is the actual timeline from here to study has started?
Do you recall what months we discussed doing that?
I mean, the idea is we're going to start getting everything prepared and ready to go, but of course, we don't want to, you know, put the cart before the horse, you know, before the vote comes in to appropriate funds. But I believe we were thinking about, was it May, June?
I think we were talking about getting it early May or April for...
April, May?
The bids to come back through and then scheduling the initial teacher-staff interviews to get input from them and get, so that we can have the buy-in, you know? If they're involved on the ground level, it always works a lot better for projects that end like this. But yeah, I think that we would probably, as long as they start in May or June, before June 30, I can encumber those funds. But they have to begin in the fiscal year. So, and that will be done. But most likely, May, June, probably end of May before summer hits and people are thinking about vacation.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.